Pretty loud. Welcome to our school board meeting tonight. For some of you that may want to find a seat, there are a few seats open up here in front if you don't want to stand in the back. Would you join me, please, in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are pleased to recognize thirty outstanding Parkway teachers. They've been selected by their peers as their school's Teacher of the Year. Their dedication to students, community spirit, and personal commitment to excellence has earned them this honor. A special thank you to the Parkway Alumni Association for hosting a reception prior to tonight's meeting for the teachers and their families. What a pleasure to meet them and congratulate them. The Alumni Association provides monetary awards and crystal apples for the elementary, middle, and high school Teacher of the Year recipients, which they will receive at the appreciation evening, I think that's in April. Next, I would like to call Dr. Desi Kershawfer, our Deputy Superintendent, to come forward. Also, welcome Mimi Holder, the president, current president of the Parkway Alumni Association, to join us in congratulating our Teachers of the Year.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Jacob, Vice President Mulgman, Superintendent Martin, Secretary Stover. It is a great pleasure to recognize Parkway's Teachers of the Year. Tonight, we will announce their name, and you can learn more about our outstanding educators in your program. Parkway has an exceptional instructional staff, so to be honored as the Teacher of the Year for your school is quite a distinguished honor, and it signifies you are a great teacher. So what does it mean to be a great teacher? Of course, we know there's knowledge, critical thinking, and all the other faculties and credentials are important. However, a great teacher should be much more than credentials, experience, and intelligence. What lies in the heart of a great teacher? Tonight, we will meet people who are compassionate, empathetic, they are positive, they are builders, they inspire, and they are obviously greatly respected by their peers. I want to congratulate all our Teachers of the Year in the room tonight. So, welcome and congratulations. When I call your name, could you please come forward and be addressed by the board, and then we'll ask you to step to the side for a photo, just briefly after. Now for our high school Teachers of the Year. From Central High, and we're going to give him some time, he's injured, but he is our Teacher of the Year, for math, Tom Schaefer. Congratulations, Tom. From Fern Ridge High, science teacher Paul Malonis. Paul. Our next Teacher of the Year from North High, and also the high school overall Teacher of the Year, Eve Dial, librarian, North High. Eve. From South High, history teacher and soccer coach Al Trost. And our final high school Teacher of the Year, from West High, special educator Darla Maynard. Darla. Please welcome Dr. Chelsea Watson, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, to introduce our middle school Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing teachers who work within age to experience more development at this age than any other age except infancy. Middle schoolers experience a wealth of physical, social, emotional, and intellectual changes. The teachers that I will recognize next have demonstrated proficiency in working with this amazing group of students. So please, let's start with Central Middle Teacher of the Year Nancy Hessman. And Nancy teaches HPE. Our Northeast Middle School Teacher of the Year is the library media specialist. It is Cara, I'm sorry, Kyra Landhold. Kyra. Our South Middle Teacher of the Year, science teacher Joanne Miles. Our Southwest Middle School and middle school Teacher of the Year is Angie Lally, eighth grade history. And our West Middle School Teacher of the Year is Carrie Kenyon, a special educator. I'd like to now invite Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, to the podium to introduce our elementary school Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. I also have the pleasure of recognizing a group of teachers who are proficient. These teachers are capable of teaching the guaranteed and viable curriculum while at the same time tying students' shoes, zipping zippers, ensuring there are Kleenexes, and even being called mom on occasion. The craft of an elementary teacher is complex and most rewarding. These teachers are masterful at fostering the natural curiosity, creativity, and confidence that our youngest learners bring to school. Please join me in acknowledging Parkway's elementary Teachers of the Year. We will begin with Kimberly Sonderman. She is the Teacher of the Year from our early childhood program. Kimberly. Next, we will recognize Marissa Unwin, kindergarten teacher from Barrett's Elementary. Our next elementary teacher of the year is Alexis Lukey, instructional coach at Bel Reeve Elementary. We will recognize two teachers from Carmen Trails, Graham Allen, who teaches music. And also from Carmen Trails, John Fitzsimmons, who is a special educator. John was unable to be with us this evening. Next, I would like to recognize Lindsay Wagner, kindergarten teacher from Claymont. Our next elementary teacher of the year is Ann Wilks, art teacher from Craig Elementary. Sasha Walkley, would you please come forward? Sasha is an ESOL teacher from Green Trails. Sasha is Green Trails Teacher of the Year, elementary teacher of the year. And Sasha is our district teacher of the year. Next, we will recognize a second grade teacher from Hannah Woods, Lindsay Zenzelmeier. Third grade teacher from Henry, Katie O'Connor, is Teacher of the Year for Henry. Highcroft Ridge, selected special educator Madison Richardson as their Teacher of the Year. PE teacher Randy Fant was selected as the Teacher of the Year from Mason Ridge. Randy. Erin Donley, special educator from McKelvey, was selected as their Teacher of the Year. Next, we will recognize Kimberly Wolf, third grade teacher from Oak Brook Elementary. Instructional coach Amanda Kelly was recognized as Teacher of the Year from Piermont. River Bend selected their music teacher Kathy Matolsky as the Teacher of the Year. Julie Roy, third grade teacher from Ross Elementary, is the Teacher of the Year for Ross. Megan Unterriner, fifth grade teacher from Shannon Doha Valley. Sorento Springs selected Madison Jurell, first grade teacher, as their Teacher of the Year. And Linda Mahfou, reading specialist at Ren Hollow, was selected as the Teacher of the Year for Ren Hollow, and I don't believe Linda was able to be with us this evening. So, I am so proud for all of these elementary teachers.
The families and children, grandchildren, it was just a pleasure. Thank you all for coming tonight and supporting the Teachers of the Year. Hope I didn't steal your thunder, Chris, but it was just a wonderful, wonderful gathering. Thank you very much.
I was busy getting her chair warm for her. Congratulations to all of our teachers. This is just wonderful to see this kind of people in our schools that deal with our children every day. We want to thank the members of the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee chaired by Sam Skibby, another music guy from Craig Elementary. Although I know you enjoy reading the nominations, it's not an easy task to narrow it down to the elementary, middle, and high school and district Teachers of the Year. So thank you to our teachers and their families, colleagues, and administrators for joining us on this special occasion, and especially to you parents. Again, thank you to you for your loneliness, your wonderful children, to be teachers here in Parkway. At this time, we're going to take a brief break so that if you have other things you want to go on to, maybe some homework, then we'll resume. We'll resume the board meeting in just a few minutes. Our board meeting. Six point oh additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Six point oh one addition to the agenda of item eleven point oh three, approval of personnel items. Six point oh two updates to the agenda, item twelve point oh one, approval of healthy relationships, sexual health framework. Seven point oh citizen statements. I have sixty-nine here. We're going to be limiting it to an hour tonight, so if you've already spoken to the board before and don't have anything new, you might let someone in your group speak, because we probably won't get to all sixty-nine if everybody speaks for a minute. But what I would like to do too is I'm going to call out ten names. I'd like you to line up over here along that railing so we can make sure we get to it quickly and take advantage of all the time we have. And then if you could refrain from cheering or clapping, that'll make it go a little quicker too. So appreciate it very much. Let me read the first ten off, and if I get these wrong, let me know when you get up here, if you would just state your name and your address so we can make sure we get the response to you. Anna Rikard, Maya Petty, Rebecca Velasquez, Jenna Librach, Fred Denny, Stephanie Pilon or Pilon, Pam Hill, Carolyn Johnson, Pamela Kramer, Laura DeLuca, and Carrie Vols. We'll go that far. So we'll begin with you, Anna. Thank you very much.
My name is Anna Rikard. I'm a junior at Parkway North High School, and I am in strong support of the proposed curriculum changes. One of the biggest problems in Parkway's health curriculum is that it does not address sexual consent. And this is a huge problem, given that walking into any Parkway middle school, at least one of those students statistically has probably already been sexually assaulted in their short lifetime. By not teaching students about consent, Parkway is leaving these students behind. And this new curriculum would give students the tools they need and help them to be safe and educated. For the hundreds of Parkway students that will be sexually assaulted in their lifetime, this current curriculum leaves them defenseless. Please vote to adopt this curriculum and give Parkway students what they need to be safe and included. Thank you.
Maya?
Oh my god, I'm too short. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Maya Petty. I'm seventeen years old, and I'm a junior at Parkway Central High School. Can I give it to you privately? I don't feel comfortable. Okay, my address is eight one nine Inan Avenue. No problem. I am in strong support of the new sex ed proposal. With the current sex ed curriculum that we use, we ignore the identities of many LGBTQ youth in our schools. By ignoring these identities, we are By ignoring these identities, we are subconsciously teaching prejudices and intolerance in turn making our students in the LGBTQ community who are also Parkway students feel unsafe and isolated by our peers. So I think that we need to make the change tonight. Thank you.
Rebecca Velasquez.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Velasquez and my address is one four one six four Cross Trails Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, six three oh one seven. Okay. I am a junior at Parkway Central High and I am in strong favor of this new proposal. High school is supposed to prepare us for college, which in turn will prepare us for the real life. But they forget to teach us about one of the biggest problems on college campuses. One in four women will be the victim of sexual assault in her academic career. This could happen to any one of the students in this room. It could even even happen to our young people. We need to educate our students on consent in order to stop the cycle. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenna Libra. Uh my address is seven Youngstown Court, Chesterfield, Missouri. Uh I'm a sophomore and I am in support of the new sex ed proposal because it is important that children know and understand the gender spectrum. A way a person identifies does not have to be strictly masculine or feminine as gender identity can be neither or lie at a point between the two. It is important that children are taught that it is acceptable for them to not identify strictly as society tells them they must. These curriculum changes will benefit all Parkway students and that is why I'm in support. Please vote yes for these changes and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pam Hill. I'm sorry, Fred Denny.
Good evening, board members. My name is Fred Denny. I live in Manchester. After you were elected by the people in this room, you took an oath of office. It's in the computer, they said that's all I needed. Nine oh eight Parkview Valley Drive. After you were elected by the people in this room, you took an oath of office and you swore that you would uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri. When you took that oath, you did not say that you were going to pick and choose which laws you wanted to uphold and which laws you wanted to ignore, because nobody would have voted for you if you had said that. Now it is against Missouri law for you to vote in favor of the curriculum that Planned Parenthood calls comprehensive sex education. If you vote for this curriculum, you'll be violating revised statutes of Missouri, section one seven zero point zero one five point seven. The law says that you can't impose a sex education curriculum if that curriculum is offered, sponsored or furnished in any manner by an organization that is provider of abortion services or which refers patients to abortion providers. Four organizations that developed and are fighting for this curriculum are either providers of abortions or make referrals to abortion providers. These include Planned Parenthood, the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Partnership, Advocates for Youth and SEACUTS. If you vote yes, you'll be breaking the law and breaking your oath of office. I honor your oath of office and vote no tonight.
Thank you very much.
My name is Stephanie Pilon. My address is sixteen eighty two Carmen Mill Drive in Manchester, six three zero two one. First, I would like to say that I support the proposed sexual health curriculum. I have read both Parkway's proposed curriculum as well as the writings on the Parkway Recall site from which I got a robo-call the other day. On the Parkway Recall site, I found opinions that use words such as perverse, vile and vulgar. And I am quoting the website. These are unacceptable terms to describe our students. On Parkway's site, I found not opinions but facts, facts that encourage students to learn, make their own opinions and then take control of their own health. Regardless of the opinions expressed by Parkway Recall and others, the fact remains clear that the LGBT community exists. And it's not going away just because some people don't share their same opinions. This is the twenty first century and our children must be taught twenty first century truths if they are to become caring and tolerant adults.
Your time is up Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. And I really would prefer if we didn't do the clapping. Thank you.
Pam Hill, five hundred Mercer Manor Drive, Baldwin. First, thanks to you and the staff members for the thorough and respectful process used to develop the proposed changes to the sexual health curriculum. I remember this starting eighteen months ago. It was, it has not been a secret. It's been open. I speak as the mother of two boys in the Parkway schools. Please vote in favor of the changes to the curriculum tonight. They are what is best for Parkway students. Sex education is an integral part of our students' health education, including information they will use in relationships for the rest of their lives. The professional staff at Parkway developed the curriculum based on medically accurate information. The organizations consulted represent current medical and scientific standards and practices. The curriculum remains abstinence-based. It includes information students need to remain healthy if they choose not to be abstinence. It includes information that supports all students, no matter their gender identity or sexual orientation. Parkway is a public school district with a diverse student body.
Sorry, your time is up. I know a minute goes by really quick, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Johnson, six thirty nine Spring Meadows Drive. Members of the board, first I want to thank you for your level of transparency and parent involvement in developing this curriculum. As a Parkway parent, as well as the Director of Prevention Services at Saint Louis Superior grades, I see the impact HIV and STDs have on our youth. I also understand the grave importance of equipping our youth with medically based information that will help inform their decisions when we as parents are not there to help them. You see, it's not just about STD rates and Parkway zip codes. It's about where our kids are going after they leave high school. They are, some will not stay here. We moved our family into Parkway School District because we trust the Board of Education and Administration to make evidence-based curriculum decisions that are best for my children's physical, emotional and social needs. Do not be deterred by special interest groups when making your decision. They are concerned about their priorities, not our children and not my children. I'm grateful to have Parkway Schools as a partner in this education instead of my children gaining inaccurate information online or from their peers. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Pamela Kramer, three four three Baxter Road. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed curriculum changes. This has been an exhaustive process. No curriculum in the district has been so thoroughly scrutinized and embedded in such a transparent manner. Science is on the side of these updates and the manner in which the lessons are presented is matter of fact and nonjudgmental. While well-meaning adults can offer, can differ on minor details, there are no reasonable opposing arguments and Planned Parenthood did not fund this curriculum, that's a lie. More importantly, those arguments that have presented against updating the curriculum do not offer a good alternative. Please do the right thing for our kids and vote yes.
And if you want to get in line, Nick Depke, Dr. Kathleen Baird. Bear Chelma, Rob Hicks, Sharon Rinkland, Joy Maxwell, Sue Weaver, Lindsay Zeller.
Hi, I'm Laura DeLuca, six thirty four Princeton Gate Drive in Chesterfield. First of all, I want to thank you for the job you do. I know it hasn't been easy lately. As a Parkway graduate and parent, I am so proud of this district and the steps it takes to accept all students. Tonight, you'll be making an important decision about this very relevant curriculum update and I recognize there are strong feelings on both sides of this issue. For a moment, I'd like you to consider those sides through the lens of character education that is so vital to Parkway's success. Nobody in support of these curriculum changes has threatened you with lawsuits, recall petitions or robocalls. We haven't created websites to push an agenda, nor did we turn to local media to whip up fear and outrage. Instead, we talked about what an excellent job Parkway does in educating our children. We talked about how much our kids love school and how much the teachers love our kids. We appreciate that Parkway prepares the students for the world we live in. We talk a lot about character in Parkway and tonight is when character counts. Please vote yes for our students. Thank you.
Carrie Vols, twenty two fifty Village Green Parkway. I'm in favor of the changes. I hope all of you all are as well. I want to thank you for the robust way you've gone about doing this. And I really hope that because of a few outside fringe groups or a minority that happens to be very vocal doesn't change your mind, because it would be throwing away so much hard work. And I think the message you would be sending to the students is that you're throwing them away too. And I really hope you consider that when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Nick Depke, one two five Leah Meadows Drive. I have two kids enrolled in Parkway Schools, one at Claymont and one at West Middle School. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come as a parent and asking the board to approve the updates to the sexual health curriculum. Uh for me personally, this is important for three reasons. Uh first off, having updated information and informing our students about sexual health issues, now is the time we can make a difference in their lives and teach them the right thing. Learning in a classroom with educators who are informed versus learning online and through peers where there will be a lot of misinformation. Second reason, it teaches inclusion and acceptance, and I think this is very important in today's world, to have the facts and to learn to be open-minded. And third, it prepares our students for the real world out there. Once they leave our Parkway Schools and go to college and corporations, most major corporations, this is a reality. It's accepted. We're teaching our students to be ready for the real world. So there's a lot of propaganda and fear and lies being thrown out there. I ask you to consider the facts tonight and vote yes for the health curriculum updates. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Kathleen Berchelman of Saint Louis Children's Hospital and Assistant Professor of Pediatrics at Washington University School of Medicine, five four two Ballast Trails Drive, six three one two two. I come today with a message that if you choose to vote in support of this curriculum, you may not use as your justification that it is supported by medical science or the medical community. There is no consensus supporting your curriculum or comprehensive sex education or sexual risk reduction education. In fact, the bulk of evidence continues to support sexual risk avoidance education and we sent you a letter this morning detailing this and offering you alternative curricula. Now, at your last meeting, you had a panel of healthcare physicians who provided one-sided opinions regarding the science. Dr. Sarah Garwood was given sole authority of choosing the physicians on this panel and I contacted her. I've worked with her for more than ten years, have a very positive relationship with her. And I said, Sarah, there is no diversity of opinion on your panel. Why don't you allow me to be on your panel and provide an alternative opinion? And I was declined. So I'm here today, we sent you a letter evidencing.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Rinkland, twelve Eddie Lambeau's Drive, Manchester, Missouri. I'm a parent of three children attending schools in the Parkway South area and my husband and I are also South High graduates. I appreciate the opportunity for you to hear my voice tonight. It is my understanding that the district has received a letter warning of potential legal action if the proposed sex education curriculum framework is passed. Passage of this framework would be in violation of Missouri state law. This letter warns the district that the curriculum violates the law due to the involvement of Planned Parenthood and other organizations that provide and promote abortions. I also understand that students heavily campaign for the proposed changes to the sex education curriculum and that they are members of TASH, Teen Advocates for Sexual Health. I'm outraged to know that TASH is the political arm of Planned Parenthood of the Saint Louis region and Southwest Missouri and their aim is to rally students to push for comprehensive sexuality education in their schools and even sit on the advisory committee for this effort. I see from the petition that this is exactly what a handful of students has done and it worked. How have we allowed this to happen to our curriculum? Who exactly is in charge here? Is the possibility of legal action the wise use of taxpayer dollars? I say no. Is the possibility of legal action in the best interest of my child's education?
One minute is up.
I say no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Hicks, one one five one one, Creed Court, suite three two zero, Creve Court, Missouri, six three one four six. My name is Dr. Rob Hicks. Through two thousand thirteen, doctors had reported one hundred and fifty deaths caused by the HPV vaccine Gardasil. And Gardasil is also known to cause infertility. Since HPV is preventable by abstinence, what you're not telling them can kill them or make them unable to have children. Because this is what will happen if you just tell them, these are the different things people find pleasurable, just pick one you know best. No, middle schoolers don't know best. Their brain is still developing. Do you remember asking your kids after they did something incredibly stupid, what were you thinking? And the kid says, I don't know. Well, the fact is, they can't know. They are still developing the neural connection to their prefrontal cortex that we adults use for good judgment. I'm not proposing you teach what's morally better. I'm begging you to just be honest and simply tell Parkway kids what is better for their health. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sue Weaver. I live in the Claymont subdivision in Baldwin. Four seventeen Claymont Drive. It's against Missouri law for you to vote in favor of the frameworks before you tonight. If you do so approve the frameworks, you will be violating the Missouri law. Please remember that after you were elected by the people in this room, you took an oath of office in which you swore that you would uphold the Constitution of the United States and Missouri. When you took that oath, you did not say that you were going to pick and choose which laws you wanted to uphold and which you were going to ignore, because that would be ridiculous and no one would have voted for you. Tonight, you have to decide if you will honor your oath and apply the law to this situation. If you vote no, you will be supporting the state constitution and obeying the law. On the other hand, if you vote yes, your example will tell the children in the school district, they too can ignore the law. The law says that you can't impose a sex ed curriculum that is associated with an organization that's a provider of abortion services. Planned Parenthood's influences in the curriculum is evident in many ways.
That's your time, I'm sorry. Thank you. And could I have, get in line there too, Doug Murky, Javon Baker, Mackenzie Thompson, Sam Waite, Andrew Bennett, Chelsea Baird, Bella Segal and Alex Smith.
Joy Maxwell, Lindsay Zeller, Javon Baker, we are the next three people on the list and we are combining our times. Our addresses are twenty two thirty one Palestra Drive and eleven seven eighty Borman Circle, Thrive Saint Louis, Interested Party. We all want the same thing for the children of Parkway, for them to be equipped with the necessary building blocks for a successful life. That means decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors such as setting goals, decision-making, friendships and dating refusal skills, setting boundaries, navigating media in all forms. Concerning their sexual health, only abstinence-only education was shown to make a significant impact in behavior in the only randomized controlled trial that has been done on the subject, the twenty ten Jamad Study. Empowering children to delay sexual activity throughout their middle and high school years is the highest form of success for success planning and has been proven to have immeasurable benefits physically, socially, emotionally and spiritually. Lindsay is going to share what this looks like in the community.
Let's take a look at a neighboring community, Saint Charles County. The Best Choice Program, which is an abstinence-only curriculum, has been implanted in the county for more than eight consecutive years, with many students receiving treatments over multiple school years. Our curriculum is evidence-based, a theory of planned behavior. Results from the middle school and high school students seen in two thousand and fifteen in neighboring Saint Charles County speak for themselves. We reinforce the role of the parent. A post-survey explains that the majority of students said that they would talk to their parents if they had a question about sex. This has been identified as a critical component to healthy, safe behaviors. We empower students. They basically gain all the information that they need and the tools to say no to sex if that is their choice. We explain abstinence until marriage celebrates the complexity of the whole person in edgy, interactive, culturally sensitive manner that led to a majority of Saint Charles County students to declare that they would be sexually abstinent from now until marriage. Now, Mr. Jay is going to introduce what this looks like in the classroom.
Hi, uh my name is Javon Baker. I've been an abstinence educator since two thousand and eleven. And I could stand up here and tell you guys about our curriculum, about our activities, but what I'll do is I'll tell you a story about a young girl. About a month ago, and my class came up to me and she told me about how she had just started being sexually active with her boyfriend, protected, but she hadn't had a period since December, crying and stuff like that. And that's the stuff that that curriculum is not gonna help with. And I'll tell every student in here, no matter what your sexual orientation is, you will have a lot less regrets in your life being sexually abstinent than you will being sexually active. I promise you that. I've had students come up to me and I've never heard them say in my life, I wish I had more sex. But I've always heard them say, I wish there's some things. But I've always heard them say, "I wish there's some things in my life that I wish I never did." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Help me out again please with the clapping if you would please. Keep it-
I'm Pastor Doug Murky, Assistant Pastor, Twin Oaks Presbyterian Church, President and CEO of Churches for Life, 249 Orchard Avenue, 63021. "In love, I bring you God's warning of judgment upon those who still believe in this board that the sex education curriculum is actually good, when in reality has many components that are evil. Isaiah 5, 'Woe to those who call evil good and good evil; who put darkness for light, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter.' Woe to those who are wise in their own eyes and shrewd in their own sight," from Luke 17. "Temptations to sin are sure to come, but woe through the one through whom they come. It would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck, than he were cast into the sea, than that he should cause one of these children to sin. My dear friends, we will all, myself included, one day be judged by the words of God. So in the face of evil doing, I warn you, and I exhort you, to vote no, and escape this judgment."
Let's not have any, please help us out with the clapping please.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Thompson, I'm a freshman at Parkway North High School. I'm in favor of the healthcare change, and my address is 12467 Marine Avenue. I'm speaking today to tell you how much it would mean to me and my peers to see a more inclusive change in our health program. I have been in Parkway for nine years, and you guys have never ceased to acknowledge all students who attended your schools. By not implementing this change, Parkway will be neglecting all students' rights to have an education that teaches them about people who are and are not like them. In the end, there is no such thing as too much information, especially when it's ensuring your students are well-equipped to understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight.
Hello, my name is Samuel Waite, I live at 10 Summer Hill Lane, Town and Country, Missouri, 63017. I wanted to see what the district says on this issue, so I checked the FAQ and I found this. "While a gender spectrum may not be medically proven, it is not medically unproven." This is an excellent example of probatio diabolica, the devil's proof. The gist of this is that it's nearly impossible to have evidence to disprove the existence of the devil, or in this case, a gender spectrum. This is because the burden of proof lies with the other side. If there's no medically proven gender spectrum, there's no reason to endanger the outstanding quality of Parkway's education with information that is backed more by belief than fact. I don't suppose it would be right for others to be taught my personal worldview in school, so I would expect those with worldviews different from my own to be held to the same standard. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Bennett, I am a freshman at Parkway Central High School. My address is 215 Runnymede Avenue. I'm going to state some facts here, but first, I know that a lot of people here cannot speak due to the time limit, so I would like anyone who is in support of this to please raise their hand. And there have been many, many, many other people over these last three years. I'm going to state facts. Fact, the people who sent a letter threatening to sue are classified as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center and by other law centers. Fact, there is a separation of church and state, and most of these arguments are based off of church. Other fact, you all say that Planned Parenthood is involved. They have not been funding and they have been supporting us, yes, but you know who has also been supporting us? Parkway. You know who's also been supporting us? All of these churches who are in this letter right now. I beg you, please, please pass this, because it will make a difference to so many children. This, would you rather have your students in Parkway find out from medically correct sources, from teachers that you have chosen, or would you rather have them go online, search in "what does this mean" on Google, find 2,000 results, and have 1,900 of them be inaccurate? I beg you, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chelsea Baird. My mailing address is 1831 Orchard Hill Drive. I am in strong support of the changes to the curriculum. So at the moment, our curriculum basically assumes that all of our students are heterosexual and not transgender. This is harmful, not only because LGBT students are more likely to contract STDs, but also because excluding these students from health curriculums contributes to a general animosity towards these students who already face judgment from their peers. LGBT students also have more benefit from sexual education, they face already inordinate amounts of negative sexual health results. We need also consent-based education in our curriculum, because by teaching students that no means no, we can hope to reduce rape cases locally. In the end, it's not just about keeping kids safe from STDs, although that is a large part of the issue, it's about helping students feel safe and accepted in the schools they go to every day. It's about decreasing the amount of rape victims that must leave their lives with severe trauma. We need to take a stand for the everyday victims who walk through halls. Thank you.
My name's Bella Segal, and my mailing address is 334 Stable Stone Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. My name's Bella Segal, and I'm an eighth grader at Parkway Central. An inclusive sex ed unit would be important to me, because it's dire to be inclusive of all identities, to build a strong school community where all voices feel safe. Another reason is that hate is usually derived from fear, and if people are taught about what they don't know, then less prejudice and hurt will be inflicted on the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
And if we could have get in line, you can come up. Emily Kirkham, Jack Bennett, Stacy Washington, Salma Ahmed, Joan Kirstine, Saba, Randall Kirkland, Ajum Hassan.
Hi, my name is Lexi Smith, my mailing address is 733 Gascon Drive. I'm currently a junior at Parkway North High School, and one argument I've heard a lot from opposition is that parents should be the one teaching this curriculum or this topic to their students. And I remember in freshman year, lots of parents had the talk with their kids, but lots of what they heard wasn't medically accurate. They were just told, you know, "Wait till marriage, and that'll fix your problem." But lots of them didn't wait till marriage, and they didn't know how to handle it, they didn't know how to protect themselves. And I think it's really important that Parkway protect all of its students. And at this year's 2016 Spirit of Excellence Awards, Dr. Marty, you said that you were thankful to have a board that was committed to all of its students. And I think if that's really true, this board will vote in favor of the curriculum change. Thank you.
I am Emily Kirkham, my address is 1296 Luray Drive, and I am an eighth grader at Parkway Central Middle. Just a few years ago, my brother had a friend who was born female but transitioned to male. He was ridiculed by his peers, but supported strongly by the teachers. By teaching children about other genders and sexualities, we can limit the amount of prejudice on these people.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jack Bennett, and I reside at 215 Runnymede here in Creve Court, Missouri. I'm a college professor in the healthcare field, and I also have a son that attends Parkway Central High School. I've listened to a significant amount of dialogue and have concluded that there are a lot of reasonable points brought up on both sides of the argument. Yet, to help make sense of the discussion, I feel it is important to discuss what the literature says. The research is clear that the LGBTQ student experiences disproportionate rates of victimization, reports lower GPAs, and is four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. This is indisputable and unacceptable. Ultimately, we are all here for the one reason, and that is to raise our children to be the best that they can be. And one of the most important parts of this evolution is education. And educating them to be independent thinkers, to foster creativity, to encourage critical thinking, and to embrace diversity and inclusivity.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Washington, 528 Wendy Hill Lakers Lane. I'm here because I guess I just really don't understand why we would promote something that already has a high incidence of, as people have come up and said, "It's difficult for transgendered students, it's difficult for their peers, they have a hard time being accepted." The curriculum changes that you're proposing call people who aren't transgendered cisgendered. People who are currently not experiencing any issues, children who don't have any sexual identity problems at all, are taught that alternative modes of sexual being are acceptable and need to be promoted. I'm not saying that anyone should be excluded, I'm not saying that you shouldn't make changes that are beneficial to students, but when I see that Planned Parenthood has been involved in the process, it raises flags for me. And I think all viewpoints being respected means that my viewpoint as a person who doesn't support Planned Parenthood should be just as respected as anyone's who does. As a taxpayer, I find it odd that you can't opt out of this. A parent that doesn't agree with what you're proposing can't opt out and prevent their student from being in it. Thank you for your time.
We have combined statement. Salma Ahmed, 14603 Mills Spring Court, 63017. 14603 Mills Spring Court, Chesterfield, 63017. And I'm bringing a study that's for its latest, 2016. There are what dangers and side effects are for oral sex and anal sex, and I think on your website, it says you are promoting these sexes as safer sex. But what this study is saying, I have a list of diseases that includes life-threatening diseases like hepatitis A, B, and C, HIV, syphilis, oral cancer, and HPV infections. From just HPV, there is a study indicating a cancer rate of oral pharyngeal area tripled over the last 20 years. There are 99,000, 2,000 men and women with oral cancer just from this virus per year, and this is to double in the next 10 years. This is CDC information.
Is Saba going to speak too, or?
No, she's got a combined statement.
Anal sex has 30 times more chance of transmitting HIV. I will give you this at the end. Now, these are related, oral and anal sex are related with highly dangerous diseases, and this is not what you are portraying on the website. You indicate as a safer alternative. Safer to what? And when smoking is banned, drugs are banned, alcohol is banned, for health reasons, and this has a longer list of health reasons.
Your time is up, two minutes. Thank you.
I have to hand you the-
Yes, give them to-
The petitions that I have, about 900.
Wonderful.
Good evening, my name is Joan Kirstine, I live at 804 Clayworth Drive in Baldwin. I'm a resident of the school district, and I support the expansion of the sex education curriculum. I think it's important to give our kids the education they need to be safe and healthy and to have respect for everyone. We're fortunate to live in an area with easy access to the best healthcare and medical education. The curriculum was developed with area public health organizations and audited by fine physicians, hospitals, and universities that are local to us. If you oppose the changes, it's simple, you can opt out of it, your kids don't have to participate. But if you don't make the changes, there's no option for people who want the education to opt in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ajum Hassan from Washington University School of Medicine. I'm an associate professor in immunology there, and this is my friend Tyra Malik, we signed up together, so she's going to donate her time to me. I'm at 1772 St. Phil Lane Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. I'm a proud mother of three boys, two of whom are alumni of Parkway West High, and the third one is a freshman in West High. And as a parent and a busy professional, I want to thank everyone on the Parkway team of professionals and their excellence in teaching my kids, because they literally made my job much easier. They kept my kids focused and allowed them to grow into accomplished students, and are very ready to take on new challenges, and they are in very competitive colleges right now. I am here to respectfully engage you to vote no to the proposed changes in the sex curriculum, and here is why. I'm not going to quote any statistics, because everyone is aware of the statistics associated with the sexually transmitted disease. I am going to tell you the statistics of my own personal life, my own personal experiences with the patients. A 12-year-old who had a postpartum pap smear, meaning after the delivery, a test that showed cervical cancer, okay? A 23-year-old with invasive cervical cancer, pelvic, all the pelvic organs being removed surgically in a patient who had intractable cervical cancer that could no longer be treated at age of 30, okay? So, and many more biopsies and autopsies of HIV-inflicted patients, and, you know, while these statistics are very sad and very heartbreaking, and I do not mean any disrespect to anybody who's suffering from these illnesses in their own loved ones, I am just here to tell our youngsters, you can avoid all this pain and physical suffering by making the right choice of intimate, right choice for your intimate and sexual relationships. Choosing abstinence, not only abstinence from all forms of sex, but also abstinence from, not only abstinence from get pregnant, but also abstinence from all forms of sex. 15- to 24-year-olds account for 50% of the 20 million new cases of sexually transmitted disease in the United States annually.
Sorry, your time is up, I'm sorry.
Two minutes up?
Yeah, it went up fast.
Thank you very much.
While Randall is coming up, let me call for Sukhela Jalal, Rahela Jamil, Fran Hamilton, Tariq Hassan, Patty Federer, Amy Vineyard, Lillian Humphrey, and Christine Wells.
My name is Randy Kirkland, I am the husband of a Parkway grad, the father of a Parkway grad, grandfather of five young children, an elder in a local church with several Parkway students, but most importantly, my ultimate allegiance is to the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm sorry?
State your address, please.
12 Hedgewood Lane, Manchester, Missouri, 63011. My ultimate allegiance is to the Lord Jesus Christ, who has forgiven me of sin and given me eternal life. I plead with you to reject this curriculum, I plead with you to stick to your mission as a school board. This initiative is actually contrary to your own mission. You propose to work in partnership with the parents, but in fact, the curriculum actually undermines parental involvement. My opinion of the curriculum isn't all that important, what matters is what God has said. If you want to know what makes a difference, what makes a student successful, hear the words of God. This book of the law shall not depart from your mouth, but you shall meditate on it day and night, so that you may be careful to do according to all that is written on it.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. That minute went fast. Sukhela?
Suleka?
I'm Dr. Zuleka Jalal, and this is Rahela Jamil, and I will be presenting a joint statement. My address is 14790 Brookhill Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. My address is 14790 Brookhill Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, and Rahela's is 14450 Bantry Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri. Good evening. I am pediatric hospitalist at St. Luke's. Respected Parkway School Board, please vote no to the proposed sex ed curriculum. My reasons for the above request. The Center for Disease Control, CDC, reported in November of 2015 that cases of STDs is on the rise at an alarming rate. As a response to this epidemic, the CDC listed as of January 2016, the most effective strategies for reducing STD risk. And I quote, "Number one, abstinence, the most reliable way to avoid infection." Let not the much-needed campaign to protect vulnerable youth in the LGBT community lead you to hurt them and their fellow students by taking them down the slippery slope of CSE. I have independently researched the comprehensive sexual education, and I find nothing comprehensive about it. A human child is body, mind, and soul. Any program that claims to advocate for the well-being of all children should then address health holistically. CSE does not. There are overt and subliminal messages in the CSE that are harmful to the biological, emotional, and spiritual well-being of a child. Respected Board, I have held the hand of a child dying with HIV. I have seen the devastation of a teenage girl with pelvic inflammatory disease now at risk for infertility. I have performed a rape exam and collected specimens on a young woman in the ER. I have seen the devastation of a family with a teen pregnancy. I am not here at the behest of anyone. I am not here to speak for this group against that group.
Time.
I am here for the children.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Please.
My name is Fran Hamilton. I live at 1316 Rustic View Drive in Baldwin. I hope each of you recognizes that favoring some things about this curriculum is not enough to warrant your voting for it. If implemented, this curriculum would profoundly impact Parkway students and the entire community for the foreseeable future, and many of the curriculum's effects would be irreversible. Do you want our young people to take sex so casually that they view sexual intercourse as only a physical act involving body parts? Do you want our young people to accept this curriculum's invitation to subject our own bodies to the physical and emotional risks of sexual experimentation? Do you want to risk making Parkway vulnerable to the time-consuming, expensive entanglement that could result from approving a curriculum that does not comply with Missouri law? If your answer to any one of those questions is no...
Fran, your time is up, Fran, I'm sorry.
I fervently implore you to summon the courage to vote no on this proposed curriculum.
I know there's a desire to clap, but we really appreciate if you would honor us on that.
My name is Dariq Hassan. I'm a physician in the community. My address is 1772 Stiffel Lane Drive, Chesterfield. Respected members of the Park Board, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to share a few thoughts and opinions. I would ask the Board to wait no on the new proposals to the change in the sexual education curriculum. I speak to you not only as a physician, but as a parent of three, two Parkway graduates and one Parkway High School student. The year's ages 12 to 18 are a time of great emotional and biological change for young boys and girls as they transition into adulthood. Even in our children, even in our three children who grew up under one roof, there were great variation in their intellectual and emotional capabilities. Some were ready for sensitive information at an early age, and some needed to wait for much later. Parkway School District encompasses 20,000 students from diverse ethical, racial, cultural, and religious backgrounds. The panel of experts have certainly done a great job in putting together a comprehensive sexual educational curriculum, but the question arises, that does a single level, that while a single level of math or English might be appropriate for all students of similar age, the same may not be true of the sex education. One size does not fit all.
Time.
The discussion of emotional relationships.
Thank you. Patty?
Hello, I'm Lillian Humphrey. I live on 311 Stablestone Drive, and I would like to say that we need to pass the sex ed program. If this, if a school's education, or, if a school's goal is to educate, then this is a huge step in the right direction. This isn't a religious debate, this isn't a debate of opinion, this is for the facts of the 21st century. We have students that have STDs and are pregnant in our schools because they were not taught how to use a condom, or that they could get STDs from oral sex. I know people who think that they can't get STDs from oral sex. I've met these people, and they've told me so, in my own school. This is for the students who have been sexually assaulted because they didn't know how to say no, and they didn't know how to get help. This is for the students who are LGBT plus and who felt uncomfortable in the classroom because students would discriminate against them because they did not know how to speak to them, or how to treat them properly. I myself have felt uncomfortable with my teacher and other students because they did not know.
Time. Thank you.
So, hi, my name is Patty Federer. I live at 1377 Brinston Court, Baldwin, Missouri. I dropped a letter off all to you today by way of Nikki. I hope that you received it, had a chance to read it. I'm as nervous as a cat. Okay, so, I had a lovely conversation with our superintendent. It was informative and positive, enlightening, and even if we disagree on certain things, I was very pleased to know who was at our helm. It was my primary intention to encourage him, and now you all, to please take on the very demanding, difficult, but highly rewarding task of leading this community to a unified conclusion. I shared with him that my perspective that this curriculum is in its second trimester. It has its original seed, it has its influx of LGBTQ sensitivity and inclusivity and the national standard. It needs now, what it needs desperately is local fertilization prior to implementation to bring it to full term. Something amazing is happening here. You have people who normally are killing each other all over the planet, talking to each other, and strategizing, and trying to make room for things that are beyond their knowledge and experience. If you pass this tonight, I believe you do so prematurely and give rise, birth to something that's half-baked and divisive.
Thank you.
Please give hope to the democratic process.
Hi, my name is Amy Vineyard. My address is 425 Briar Hill Drive, Baldwin. I appreciate the opportunity for you to hear my voice. I'm a parent in the Parkway School District who enthusiastically wants all Parkway students to enjoy the lifelong benefits of sexual integrity. After reading through the comprehensive sexuality education curriculum, I am very concerned about the content and verbiage that is used. For example, this was in the seventh grade objectives. Students will learn methods of STI transmission through vaginal, anal, and oral sex. This is not acceptable. A seventh grader's body is not ready for this behavior. It is our job as parents and educational leaders to teach and model clean, wholesome, and sexual integrity. I am pleading with you to please vote no in changing the current sex ed education. Thank you.
And if I could ask the following to come up, you can go ahead and come up while I call these names. Rebecca Larson, Ben Gleason, Stephen Sitzer, Kate Wall, Phyllis Kessler, Carol Fosse, Brian Robey, Russell St. John, Carmen Baumgartner. Getting close to that hour. Go ahead.
Hi, Christine Wells, 391 Novara in Baldwin. I am the mother of two lovely girls. One is in South High, and one is going to be starting kindergarten. And I just want them to have the childhood they deserve, especially my young one. I want her to be able to grow and be ready for some of this information that you guys are planning to share. And as a parent, it is, it is given to me to protect her and lead her and educate her and help her be safe and learn things, to wear her helmet when she's riding a bike, things like that. Why can't I try this as well? Why can't I decide when she's ready for it? If, if she needs to learn self-control in the classroom and in life, why can't she learn self-control when it comes to sex as well? It is something that I think society is lacking more and more and more every year. And we really need to, as parents, take control of that and teach our children. They need to learn this, they need to be in control of themselves. So I vote, I urge you to vote no, please. Give them their childhood back. Thanks.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I'm Rebecca Larson, 630 Oak Path Drive. I was looking at Parkway's written goals, which include community involvement and the desire to create respectful learning environments to support the well-being, integrity, and character development of our students. I love this about Parkway and believe we're successfully achieving this with Parkway's range of electives and diverse after-school clubs that allow freedom of expressing a broad range of values and finding camaraderie. With the diversity in place, tolerance is taught and expected with consequences. So to ignore our success and begin requiring a highly controversial sex ed program for all seems illogical. It alienates. This radical shift would undermine the breadth of cultural, religious, and conscientious values of our student body. How could Parkway be encouraging and respecting integrity while simultaneously rejecting some of our students' convictions? You may argue some could opt out. Our family with its four Parkway students...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Have said that that would be embarrassing and awkward.
Thank you.
So...
Please cut a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ben Gleason, 501 Kimmelworth Lane, Baldwin. Thank you for your time. No matter what you do tonight, you will anger a portion of your constituents. All of the parents here, whether for or against the curriculum, care deeply about our kids. But what's being proposed is not for us as parents, it's for the students of 2016 and beyond. While we look to the future, we can be informed by the past. Thomas Jefferson said, "If the children are untaught, their ignorance and vices will in future life cost us much dearer in their consequences than it would have done in their correction by a good education." Jefferson is saying that education is what will prevent dire and unfortunate consequences. Ignorance is costly and dangerous. In the case of our students' sexual health, ignorance of factual information that is presented in a manner that fosters respect for all puts them at greater risk of sexually transmitted infections, sexual abuse, and sexual violence. I urge you to vote to approve the proposed curriculum, not because I or countless other parents want it, but because our kids deserve it. It will help further Parkway's mission, ensure all students are able to understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world.
Hi, my name is Kate Wall, 13211 Windy Gate Lane. I am the mother of three daughters, who recognizes this whole thing makes me uncomfortable, but it's real. I do not, neither, either support or not support this proposal. Time is ticking here. I am here to ask that as much effort that we put into supporting our students, I ask the same courtesy to parents. So I actually think that this is all about mostly parents. I ask for complete transparency in curriculum, timeline of what will be covered, how it will be presented, and how teacher opinion will influence the message. I ask for the same respect that we teach our children, a parent who wants to be first line of knowledge for the topics and not our school district. I'm not naive, I just want to beat you to the punch. I am a parent who is honest and open, and I want to be given the opportunity to continue that role.
Thank you, Kate.
I'm Stephen Sitzer, 518 Gray Hill Drive. I've had three children at Parkway Schools, and I have felt I could trust Parkway to give my children a quality education in accordance with good moral values. But if the Board approves of the proposed curriculum, they will have betrayed that trust. The new curriculum promotes depravity as if it was virtuous and abandons morality. This is an abusive curriculum. I was appalled at the last Board meeting when I heard from the panel recommending the curriculum. Every member was in lockstep with a single radical agenda, pushing a perverse view of sexuality, a biologically ridiculous view of gender, and a rejection of morality. A good panel should represent a variety of viewpoints, but not one person on that panel supported the sexual values that the vast majority of our community have adhered to. Letting that panel design Parkway's health curriculum is like letting a panel of astrologers design the physics curriculum. No matter what their credentials are, they are very, very wrong. Please, I beg of the Board, do not force Parkway's parents to have to unteach our children the lies that are in this curriculum. Do not force us to have to tell our children that they can no longer trust their teachers. Do not force us to tell newcomers to the community that they should seek out private schools because Parkway is working against parents instead of supporting them. For the sake of our children and the trust of the parents, please vote against this curriculum.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Kessler, 1921 Shadowwood Court. I've been a nurse for 44 years. I know that science is the best teacher for our children. If we give them false information, they're going to make bad decisions. Please vote yes on this curriculum change. Our kids deserve to know.
I'm Dr. Carol Faust, 1216 Moncor Drive, St. Louis, 63146. My husband Jeff and I chose to live in Parkway School District because of the excellent reputation of the schools. We sent our three children to Parkway Schools because we were able to trust that the district would respect our family's values, values based on our religious beliefs in Jesus Christ. The proposed changes in the health curriculum attack my beliefs, causing my trust in Parkway Schools to be broken. The district used to have their middle school curriculum allow parents to teach their children sensitive issues. I want to know why now does the district believe that teachers need to discuss sensitive issues according to a set of values that are not shared by many parents in the district? One of the testifications for changing the curriculum is that it's already being taught in classrooms. That statement indicates a failure of the administration in Parkway to ensure that the stated curriculum is being followed. How can I be assured that parents...
Time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent of four children in Parkway School District. My address is 33 Novara Drive in Baldwin. I'm also a pastor's wife, and I want the LGBT students and their families here to know that there are many Christians that support and love you, and I don't want you to leave here thinking that that's not true.
And your name?
I came, Carmen.
Okay.
Sorry. I first was going to thank the Board for all the work they did, but I decided to use my time instead to read a few things that people are very confused about. What is included in the sex health curriculum is a strong abstinence message, discussions about how abstinence is the only 100% method of preventing STIs and pregnancy. That is in the curriculum. Not in the curriculum is a discussion of abortion as an option for an unwanted pregnancy. Not in the curriculum is a discussion of different ways to have sexual intercourse or how to obtain sexual pleasure. I think people are confused. I also know that this is not sponsored by Planned Parenthood, and I want people to understand that because I think that is going around. I want these kids to feel supported, and I want to thank you again for doing this, for putting up with all this. And I'm sorry that you've had to deal with threats and insults this evening. It's not fair.
Well, I hate to tell somebody named Carmen that their time is up because my wife's name is Carmen.
And she wouldn't put up with it.
This will be our last citizen statement tonight, so appreciate it. I'm sorry that we couldn't get to all of you. Did an amazing job in saying what you needed to in one minute. Thank you.
My name is Brian Robey, 1230 Big Bend Avenue. I'm the administrative director of Twin Oaks Presbyterian Church, and I want you to know that our church... that our church has been praying for this Board. We recognize the gravity of the decision before you and regardless the courage it will take for you to cast your vote. I won't presume to defend lifelong convictions in 60 seconds. I believe, and those who attend our church believe, that you should vote against this curriculum. I believe that voting against it is the right thing to do, and I personally urge you to do so. But moreover, thank you for your service and know that you're in our prayers.
Thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Item 8.0 on our agenda tonight. May I ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for March 9, 2016? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries seven zero. Resolutions, there are none tonight. Communications, 10.01, calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 6 at 7:00 p.m. here at Central Middle School with an anticipated close session at 6:00 p.m. 10.02, we have an election coming up for the Board on April 5. There are two seats open. One is being vacated by Tom Applebaum after 200 board meetings. He's calling it quits. And the other, if there are others here, I'd like to have them stand that are running. Sam Sorrentino is running again. Is Sophia Ford Glanton, is she here? Sometimes her work doesn't allow her to. A.J. Wang. Sudhir Rathoid is standing back there. He just raised his hand. Anne Michael Burtz, I saw him earlier somewhere. These are the individuals that are running. All of them, to me, appear to be very well-qualified, and you'll hear more of them on a candidate form that will be sponsored by the League of Women Voters, which will be here on March 29 starting at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. Board liaison reports, do we have any of those from anybody that would like to say anything about what they've done in the last month? All right, we'll start with-
I would like to say that I had the pleasure of attending the Spirit of Excellence. I think, Chris, you were there, and I think Sam went too. This is, it was just awesome to see all these kids recognized for maintaining, and I think it's a 3.5 and above, is that correct? 3.5 and above?
Yes.
Just amazing. I mean, the talent, these kids maintaining that under circumstances that we may not understand, and I'm very proud of them. And also the performers that were there, the singers were amazing. And if I say this group wrong, is it Stepit? How was it, is that what it was called?
High Steppers.
High Steppers. They were phenomenal, and this is a group of high school kids from each one of our schools, and they were just fantastic. So that was great to attend.
Debbie, you have something?
Last Monday, I attended the Risky Behaviors Program Workshop that the district put on, and it was phenomenal. I was so proud that our district brought the community together to talk about very important topics that we have in the community. I attended self-harm and internet safety, and there was a third topic on substance abuse and addictions. I can't speak highly enough of the speakers. Ken McManus did the self-harm, Jason Rooks did the internet safety, and we had, since I didn't go to the substance abuse one, I'm afraid I don't know who was there, but regardless, they were top-notch, phenomenal. I think the only criticism is that we would have liked to add more time, of course, but and thank you to Ron Ramspad, who helps put on the event as well. And I, you know, hopefully we'll see more of those kinds of events from Parkway.
Tom, do you have? Okay, Sam?
I'm baby stilling your thunder, but Mr. Jacob and Dr. Marty and I attended the Leadership in Action program at Belle Reve Elementary School, and I have to tell you, it was most impressive. The students basically conducted the entire program, from singing, making presentations, acknowledgements, and what have you. We had an opportunity to visit classes, and each student that we talked to at their table was able to recite the Seven Habits of Leadership, and they were able to show us a notebook where they kind of keep track of their work. They know exactly where they are in math and language arts and reading, et cetera. It was extremely impressive. The entire school environment just reeks of leadership because everywhere you look, there's something that relates to leadership in the school. It's holistic in the entire school. The students handled it all, as I said. The only time the principal got up to talk was at the very end to say thank you all for coming and just kind of give us directions as to where to go. So I want to applaud them. It's leadership in action that basically should happen for every child, and we appreciate all that Belle Reve is doing.
I had the pleasure on Monday night of attending the math, elementary math curriculum kickoff, not a curriculum kickoff, it's a source kickoff of the new textbooks that were purchased. There was a keynote speech delivered by a representative from Pearson who had a great deal of input into the textbooks that we're buying. The event was attended by math teachers or elementary teachers from around the district, math facilitators, principals, and parents. And I want to commend our curriculum department for their thorough analysis of the math resources available. From what I understand, the first go-around, they were not satisfied with anything that was presented, and they went through an exhaustive study to find books that would be appropriate for our kids. I thoroughly enjoyed learning about the new math textbooks.
Last Wednesday evening, I had the privilege of attending the Special School District banquet at which a number of Parkway employees were recognized. This is their annual banquet, and I think maybe they should have called it the Parkway Recognition Banquet because we had a number of people. It was so exciting, and if you'll forgive me, I'm going to name them all for what they've done. The Special Ambassadors Award is the highest award they give, and we had three groups of people that received that out of maybe a dozen. First, the Central High English Teachers, Jason Levera, Nora Biggs, and Annalise Loomis. Secondly, Dr. Jamie DeBosch, a principal at Belle Reve Elementary, and our own Dr. Keith Marty, Superintendent of our school district. Quite a big honor and very exciting. Then there were, let's see, the second group of awards were the Building Block Award, and there were three individuals receiving that award. Alisa Bookvar, a paraprofessional at North High, Mary Searing, who is a paraprofessional at Belle Reve Elementary, and Steve Young, a paraprofessional at North High. And then the lasting impression award, given to Valerie Kemhe, excuse me, a Special School District area coordinator at West High. And then the Key to the Classroom Award was given to two individuals, Susan Johnson, a teacher at Belle Reve, and Mike Feit, a teacher at Central High. So we congratulate all of them and thank them for what they're doing with our students.
Well, I just, you saw that a little bit tonight. We have a lot of teachers that were recognized as Teachers of the Year who are employed by the Special School District. But one of the neat things, and I told this story, the first year I attended the banquet or the salutes, I think we had one Parkway recognition, and now we have many. And that's due to the increased activity and partnership between the two districts. And we are doing wonderful things to really enhance our work for special needs, and it starts with our administrators, starts with boards and our administrators and our staff, and I'm really very, very proud, not only to be a recipient, but to see all the other people be recognized.
I had a Colonel when I was in the Army. I was sergeant, and he got all the awards. And we did all the work. And I know that Dr. Marty recognizes that he gets these awards, but he recognizes the people that are doing that work, and he's their motivator, so we don't want to take anything away from you at all. We appreciate it. I was at Belle Reve with Sam, and somebody got us confused. It's the first time it's ever happened. I was at the desk of a kindergartner, and he was showing me his progress with his binder and where he was in reading, and in fact, his name was Dylan, which is the same as my youngest son. And I said, "Well, great, what is your favorite book?" And it was, "I Ain't Gonna Paint No More." And you look inside there, it's paint, the kids have never been able to paint it all over. When I went over to fifth grade to see what was going on in that class, a little girl named Nyla had me, you know, they had their hands up and they wanted you to come over and talk to them, so she's showing me her binder and going through her progress, and then she got to her personal goal. I said, "Well, what is your personal goal, Nyla?" And she says, "Well, I want to grow up and not be bullied here at school or in the outside world." And I said, "Oh, my goodness, do you get bullied here?" And she says, "Oh, yes, there's a lot of girl drama here." They were witty, they were, you'd be proud of them, they were very, very sharp. In addition to some of these things, I was also at the Science and STEM Fair that was held, that many of your children participated in, some 400 exhibits, and the STEM Fair was just, that was a lot of fun. I enjoyed that a lot. Learned a lot about different kinds of gelatin. You wouldn't know that, all kinds of things you can learn in a science fair. In addition, just let me say to you, in one of the reports here, I think you'd be happy, and we give much of the credit to you, this summer, we will be spending $29 million from our bond on our different schools. Lion's share that will go to Parkway North High School, which is in dire need of it, and it'll actually take a couple more bonds to really get them where we want them to be. But we appreciate and thank you, and if you, this will be the most we've ever spent in a summer, so when you go around and see the schools, you'll see a lot of work going on and a lot of neat things that'll make them a better and safer place for our kids to be. Anything else? All right, then. Let me just say that our upcoming subcommittee meetings, there'll be a subcommittee meeting for the Parkway, Project Parkway Steering Committee, March 30 at 8:30 a.m. at ISC, for those of you that are on that committee. Teaching, Learning, and Accountability has a subcommittee meeting on March 31, the next day at 3:00 p.m., and I think that's it. 11:00, action items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented in the March 9, 2016 board materials?
So moved.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed among those consent items? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. 12.01, this is the approval of Healthy Relations Sexual Health Framework. I would like to call on first Dr. Cara Busk Miller from St. Louis University and Dr. Rob Hicks, Family Practice Physician. We were contacted as a board, and a request was made to provide time for other medical viewpoints. Out of respect for them and for our family here in Parkway, we're allowing two of those individuals, five minutes each, to present their viewpoint.
Due to the change in the ability of the staff, due to some emergencies, Dr. Patrick Young is going to read the letter this evening.
Okay, perfect.
Hello, my name is Dr. Patrick Young. I'm on the faculty as an associate professor at St. Louis University in the Department of Kinesiology. I represent myself as well as other faculty at St. Louis University. Dear members of the Board, my colleagues and I are here tonight representing over 30,000 physicians and healthcare providers who support sexual risk avoidance sexuality education. Superintendent Keith Marty and all the members of the school board are in receipt of an eight-page letter signed by the leadership of four national medical organizations, including the American College of Pediatrics, the Non-Sectorian Medical Institute for Sexual Health, the Christian Medical and Dental Association, and the Catholic Medical Association, that reviewed the materials posted online by Parkway Schools. They reached the following conclusions. Healthy relationships and sexual health is a comprehensive sexuality education program that undermines the parent-child relationship when it encourages children to independently pursue answers to their questions about sex on the internet and teaches children how to obtain birth control without parental consent. HRSH promotes a radical gender ideology, omits critical medical facts, and contains medical inaccuracies that increase children's risk for STIs, infertility, HPV-related cancers, depression, and suicide. HRSH encourages sexual risk-taking in persons whose brains have not fully matured and are already prone to poor judgment and excessive risk-taking. HRSH has not been shown to be safe or effective. In stark contrast, there is substantial evidence that sexual risk avoidance programs are superior to CSE programs in delaying onset of sexual debut without decreasing condom and contraceptive use when youth do become sexually active. Parkway Schools discloses online that HRSH is based upon and virtually identical to the guidelines established by the Sexuality Information and Education Council of the United States, or CECL, which are the foundation of all CSE programs. The NSES guidelines Parkway Schools provides online acknowledges the relationship with CECL. In addition, all of the lesson plans Parkway has posted come directly from various CSE curricula, most notably Family Life and Sexual Health, or FLAS, which is heavily endorsed by Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is one of the largest contraceptive providers in the country and the largest abortion provider in America. Leaders from these two groups produced the original CECL guidelines for CSE and are responsible for all updates to these guidelines. These facts clearly demonstrate that HRSH is indeed a comprehensive sexuality education program heavily influenced by Planned Parenthood. Troublingly, all CSE promotes the so-called "values-neutral sex education" philosophy and imply that all sexual behaviors, including sexual abstinence and the various ways in which people treat each other sexually, are in all circumstances equally healthful and ethical. This is patently false claim that has detrimental consequences in the classroom. Further, CSE programs, including HRSH, present safer sex alongside abstinence as an equally responsible and healthful choice. To be clear, HRSH, like most CSE programs, accurately and repeatedly states that abstinence is the only thing that is 100% protective against unplanned pregnancy and disease, but then spends significantly more class time on condoms, contraception, and partner consent. This greater emphasis on condoms, contraception, and consent gives kids a message that it is as responsible and healthful to be sexually active with condoms, contraception, and the consenting partner as it is to be sexually abstinent. Were we to apply this philosophy to cigarette smoking, a teacher would stand before her class and say, "Not smoking cigarettes is the only 100% way to avoid all the life-threatening diseases caused by smoking. However, those who do choose to smoke should reduce their risk by choosing low-tar varieties." No one would provide this double message to children with regard to smoking, yet this is precisely what CSE does with regard to sex. Adolescents need sex education that dedicates a majority of class time to imparting a clear abstinence message repeatedly, as is done with programs that address smoking, drugs, and alcohol use effectively. Placing emphasis on condoms and contraception as CSE, like HRSH does, undermines the abstinence message, suggests to teens that they are expected to have sex, and imparts the false belief that most teens are sexually active. This is likely one reason 44% of students report feeling pressured by their federally-funded CSE programs to engage in sexual activity. In its zeal to promote condom use, CSE often omits critical and even life-saving information. For example, HRSH lesson plans deal with prevention of pregnancy, sexually transmitted infections, and contraception accurately states that condoms are highly effective in preventing HIV infection and reduce the risk of pregnancy and other STIs. However, these curricula and lesson plans do not disclose the limitation of condoms. For example, they do not state that condom efficacy rates with regard to HIV and other STIs have only been established for vaginal sex, not anal sex. This is significant since the risk of transmitting HIV via a single episode of receptive anal sex is 30 times greater than the risk of doing so via a single episode of receptive vaginal sex. Condoms also provide less protection against herpes and HPV because these are spread by skin-to-skin contact. For a typical teen who will use condoms inconsistently and incorrectly, he or she face a 90% risk of infection after only 10 exposures and close to 100% risk of infection after 30 exposures.
So, Dr. Young, are any of the other members going to say something? Because we're down to about three minutes.
Yes, once we're finished here, they'll have time. One HRSH seventh-grade lesson plan-
A minute goes- That minute goes quickly.
...states that a homosexual person is no more likely to acquire HIV than a heterosexual person. This is medically inaccurate. The CDC has found the lifetime risk for acquiring HIV among men who have sex with men to be exceedingly high, with African-American men having a 50% lifetime risk of becoming infected with HIV, Hispanic men having a 25% risk, and white men having sex with men having about a 10% lifetime risk of HIV infection. It is imperative for male students to be aware of this, as the CDC also reports that gay, bisexual, and other men having sex with men account for most new infections of HIV among youth aged 13 to 24. And this is also the age group experiencing the fastest rise in HIV infection. In lieu of HRSH, we recommend one of the many effective and evidence-based sexual risk avoidance programs. Superintendent Marty and other members of the board are in receipt of a compendium of these programs, along with the supporting scientific research. Sexual risk avoidance education teaches about human sexuality in the context of transcendent principles, inclusive of all youth, and present medically accurate contraceptive information in a manner that does not undermine the abstinence message. SRA education aids youth in creating positive relationships such that they can achieve their optimal physical, emotional, mental, and social health as they grow into adulthood. Parkway parents have the natural authority, legal mandate, and scientific backing to demand that their children receive it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That letter was with gratitude from all of us for your attention and time. My name is Dr. Cara Busk-Miller of St. Louis University.
The letter in its entirety is posted online with supporting evidence at stlewiscma.org/pp.
My name is Dr. Rob Hicks. I'm asked to speak nationally about urgent issues that are affecting our youth and adults. Dr. David Stevens, the president of CMDA, asked me if I would present myself today to be the representative of the Christian Medical and Dental Association, and I'm here to do that gladly. I am affiliated with Harvard Medical Schools IOC.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, if you would come to the podium. Lisa will introduce her staff.
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogomann, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, and Ms. Peasel. I would like to thank you for the many hours you have spent over the past months listening, studying, and learning about the proposed Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health curriculum that we ask you to approve this evening. Your questions have been thought-provoking, thorough, and have helped us gain greater clarity. Thank you. In many correspondence you have received, it has been stated that Parkway is adopting the comprehensive sexuality education standards. We are not. Actually, the frameworks that you have been presented were created by Parkway educators. The Parkway educators considered many factors when developing the local curriculum, including recommendations from the Health and Physical Education Program Evaluation, feedback from the Sexual Health Advisory, the Parkway Character Education Standards, healthy behavior outcomes as identified by the Center for Disease Control, national health education standards from the Center for Disease Control, input from the Department of Health and Senior Services, and input from the St. Louis County Department of Health. During the process, the teachers and advisory committee did review the comprehensive sexuality education standards, and it was decided to not adopt them. Rather, it was, they were used, along with the national educational standards, as a way to audit the curriculum. In October 2015, you requested verification of an age-appropriate, medically accurate, and value-neutral curriculum from external organizations. Three audits were completed. The audits reflected a professional opinion that the proposed Healthy Relationship and Sexual Health curriculum is age-appropriate, medically accurate, and presented in a neutral way. The audits pointed out that our proposed curriculum addresses many of the national health education standards, which were developed by the Center for Disease Control. Many outcomes outlined in the comprehensive sexuality educational standards were intentionally omitted based on the professional judgment of Parkway educators and feedback from our community. Over the past few weeks, you have heard from some community members that the proposed framework is not abstinence-based. The proposal you have received actually has an increased emphasis on abstinence and emphasis on the potential physical, emotional, and social consequences of sexual activity. One of the overarching goals of the proposed curriculum is to increase the portion of adolescents who have never had sexual intercourse. Specific lesson outcomes include that students are able to explain that abstinence is a healthy choice for young people and the only 100% way to prevent unwanted pregnancies and STIs. Our students are able to describe the impact of becoming sexually active on the emotional, mental, and physical health of youth. Our students are able to use the decision-making model to defend the decision of being abstinent or entering into a romantic and/or sexual relationship, considering health implications and personal values. Some families have shared that they are concerned that through implementation of this curriculum, Parkway is taking responsibility away from families. We believe that the families are and should remain the primary teachers of sexual health. The proposed framework states, "It is understood that the teaching of sexual health is not the sole responsibility of the school system. Health educators are obligated to invite parents and guardians into the sexual health conversation so that they may serve to help communicate family values and beliefs about sexual health topics to their child." One of the overarching goals of the proposed sexual health curriculum is to increase the proportion of adolescents who talk to a parent or guardian about abstinence, birth control methods, HIV/AIDS, and sexually transmitted diseases. Many of our lessons have language to indicate that there are potential physical, mental, and social consequences to decisions regarding sexual activity. It is stressed that it is important for students to have conversations with a trusted adult. The need for sexuality education in Parkway is very evident on the information presented from the high school survey. Over half of the students in Parkway who responded reported that they rarely or never went to a parent when they were curious or had questions about sex. Most students indicated that they rarely or were never having conversations with a parent or close family member about sexual health topics such as sexual relationships, sexual health risks, sexual health protection, or even why they should not have sex at their age. One of our goals is to empower our students to feel more comfortable having conversations with family members and/or trusted adults. Some community members have asked why we decided to make changes to our current curriculum when the program evaluation survey indicated favorable feedback. It is true that parents did show favorable support of our current sexual health curriculum. As a result, most of the existing curriculum has remained the same. In another portion of the same survey, parents were asked to give feedback regarding additional learning outcomes. According to the survey, there was also favorable support on the additional content. In the student survey, we also saw strong support for the additional content. This new content is also supported by public health, medical organizations, and professionals recognized in the field as important topics and conversations for today's youth. Parkway is guided in our choice for curricular content by state and national standards, as well as local health trends and issues. As children enter their teen years, they often become attracted or interested in intimate ways to others. According to the 2013 Center for Disease Control Youth Risk Behavior, about half of all teens ages 13 to 19 report having sexual intercourse at some time. 6% reported having sexual intercourse before the age of 13. With hormones driving sexual interest in behaviors, it is more important than ever to begin conversations about healthy relationships and sexual health at an early age. Whether they are sexually active, or hopefully not with our message of abstinence, educated children need to make responsible decisions to protect their sexual health and well-being. We also want to ensure that our children have the knowledge they need to protect themselves and be safe in a larger community. We want our children to understand the dangers of digital communications regarding sex, sexting, sexual harassment, and sexual bullying in order to keep themselves safe. I believe it is important for us to understand that there are unique health challenges that our youth face today. The intent of the Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health curriculum is not to condone or promote certain behaviors, but to validate that they exist and understand how everyone can help in diminishing real threats to the health of our youth and our communities. Our goal is to help students understand the world around them, as well as their fellow students, so that we can truly accomplish our vision statements and remain true to our commitment of valuing each child's uniqueness and supporting their health and well-being. Our efforts have been to listen to all aspects of the sexuality education conversation from multiple perspectives. Our motivation or goal is to provide a quality education that meets the diverse needs of Parkway's community. We have been positively influenced by these many different perspectives, but we have also filtered all decisions and content and learning activities through the Parkway mission. There is not one group that can say that we have entertained or adopted all of their proposals or suggestions. We remain focused on developing a curriculum that addresses today's threats to sexual health of our students by bringing factual awareness of the sexual health risk factors and building the protective health skills necessary for our students to be responsible decision-makers. We are not here to promote any agenda, but rather promoting the long-lasting health of our students. Parkway has thoroughly reviewed the many aspects of the sexual health curriculum, including our guidelines and communication with parents, resource materials, as well as assurances for age-appropriate content and medical accuracy. Based on a deeper review and feedback in the past couple of weeks, we have added more content to address the benefits of adoption and the benefits of carrying an unplanned pregnancy, carrying through an unplanned pregnancy. We can confidently state that the proposed Healthy Relations and Sexual Health framework is in compliance with sexuality education expectations as identified by Missouri Law 170015. In Parkway, we take great pride in hiring the finest educators and professionals, and this is certainly true for our health teachers. I would like to emphasize that the proposed sexual health curriculum will be taught by Parkway educators who are highly qualified and who have specific coursework in health education and training, including the area of sexual health. In addition, the teachers have and will continue to collaborate with Parkway nurses and counselors to ensure our curriculum is medically accurate, developmentally appropriate, and that it is taught in a neutral stance. This evening, we have some representation from our teachers, our counselors, and our nurses, who would like to share some perspectives in regards to the proposed curriculum, and so I will let them introduce themselves as they come up, and are we gonna begin with Amy Sidnor?
Good evening, President Jacobs and members of the board. My name is Amy Sidnor. I am a PE and health teacher at Ross Elementary School, and I have been a teacher in the Parkway School District for 17 years. I come to you today to ask for your approval of the proposed Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Education Curriculum. I am here to assure you that we, as health and PE teachers, support the proposed changes to the curriculum. I have been a part of this process since the beginning. This process has been very clear, transparent, and extensively communicated by Mr. Ramspot. During the development of the curriculum, several health and PE teachers, myself included, have been a part of creating and tuning the lessons for this unit. In addition, many teachers have given their feedback on the proposed lessons and curriculum. The feedback given has been very positive. We, as teachers, know that proper training and ongoing development will be imperative to us in order to deliver the curriculum to the students in the most appropriate and accurate way. We look forward to the opportunity to teach these units and know that these lessons are an important part of our entire health curriculum for all students. As a teacher in Parkway, I am expected and I embrace the opportunity to teach all students. This proposed curriculum will allow me to do just that, as it includes lessons for all students. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your vote to approve this curriculum.
Tim Cordaville?
My name is Tim Cordaville, and I'm a health and physical education teacher at Parkway West High School. I've taught health education at the middle and high school level in the district for 27 years. I'm here tonight on behalf of the health and physical education teachers in Parkway, asking for your approval of the proposed Healthy Relationship and Sexual Health Curriculum. The curriculum approval process in the Parkway School District works. In 1993, Parkway made a decision to teach an abstinence-based sexual health curriculum. Reactions by students, parents, teachers, administration, and media were very similar to what is happening today. When the Board of Education voted in favor of the curriculum change, Parkway's process for implementing curriculum was followed. Three important things occurred. First, teachers received training and support. Second, students did show up to our classes, because almost all parents supported them being there. We made mistakes, but I've taught nearly 10,000 Parkway students our current sexual health curriculum, and we've learned and grown together over the years. Third, parents were given a choice. I've had about 40 students opt out of our sexual health curriculum in my 27 years of teaching, and for each student, we handled their opt-out as privately and thoughtfully as possible to each parent's satisfaction. This is what's happening throughout Parkway as teachers follow the curriculum process. The current curriculum approval process has been the most transparent and thorough process I've seen in my years in Parkway. The audit of the health curriculum followed the most comprehensive audit tools and found we needed some small but important updates. Surveys gained feedback from every voice possible. Meetings have been open for anyone to attend, and details of our curriculum have been available to anyone who wants to see them. Experts in our field tell us the proposed updates are medically accurate and age-appropriate. Teachers, including myself, have had the opportunity to help develop this curriculum. A survey was recently given to teachers, and the feedback was positive in favor of the proposed curriculum. And if the proposed curriculum is approved, those three important things will happen again. Teachers will receive ongoing training and support in our curriculum, including how to respect the diversity of all students in Parkway, and how to be thoughtful and sensitive to students while teaching. Second, students will show up to our classrooms, because almost all parents will support them being there. We will learn and grow together as we teach the proposed curriculum. And finally, while we wish we would have the opportunity to teach all students, some parents will choose to opt their sons and daughters from our classes, because it's the best choice for the student and their families. Overwhelmingly, people respect this process, and teachers in Parkway believe the proposed Healthy Relationship and Sexual Health curriculum is the best way we can help our students become capable, curious, and confident learners that can respond to the challenges of their ever-changing worlds. On behalf of the health and physical education teachers in Parkway, I ask you to approve the proposed Healthy Relationship and Sexual Health Curriculum. Thank you.
Natalie Wilson, school nurse.
Hi there, my name's Natalie Wilson, and I've had the privilege of being a Parkway School Nurse for the last two years. I have been involved with the Health and Physical Education Advisory Council as they've worked toward revising the sexual health curriculum over the last year. Ron Ramspot gave all of us Parkway nurses the opportunity to review the new sexual health curriculum, and I personally was able to spend a day with the curriculum writers to answer any medically-related questions and to give them feedback. The nurses of Parkway are in full support of the new sexual health curriculum. As nurses, we are dedicated to the health and well-being of every single student within the Parkway District. The National Association of School Nurses reports that sexual health education must be accessible, as well as developmentally and culturally appropriate, for all students. Health disparities and higher-risk behaviors are evident in specific pop- Health disparities and higher-risk behaviors are evident in specific populations. These disparities highlight the importance of providing sexual health education that is accessible for all students. We are thankful to Ron and his team for their dedication and major efforts to provide a sexual health curriculum in Parkway that meets these high standards. This curriculum will ensure that every student receives medically accurate, developmentally appropriate, and evidence-based information, so students will have the skills and resources to make informed and responsible decisions. We are thankful to work alongside Parkway's health educators as a resource to them and to students. Our involvement in the new curriculum helps ensure that students will be given consistent information throughout their school building and throughout their career in the Parkway District. Statistics from the National Association of School Nurses reveal that many students in America are engaging in high-risk behaviors, and Parkway is no exception. We have students in our buildings dealing with the stress of an unplanned pregnancy, the fear of sexually transmitted infections, questioning their sexual identity, and grappling with substance abuse and addiction. Every Parkway student must be provided the resources and safe environment that he or she needs for optimal health and well-being. As nurses, we directly observe the direct correlation between a student's health and his or her school performance. This curriculum will provide students with the knowledge needed to reduce high-risk behaviors and increase school performance. The Parkway nurses want to express our gratitude to Ron Ramspot and his team for their excellent work and to express how proud all of us are to be working in the Parkway School District. This curriculum is one of many examples of the commitment to excellence in Parkway's classrooms, counseling offices, nurses' offices, and beyond. The Nurses of Parkway feel this new curriculum will indeed ensure all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Lee Clawwitter, school counselor.
Good evening. My name is Lee Clawwitter, and I'm a middle school counselor serving at Parkway West Middle School. And I'm speaking tonight in support of the proposed changes to the health curriculum on behalf of middle school counselors. I have been a middle school counselor in Parkway for the last five years, but have been in the school counseling profession for eleven. Part of our role as a school counselor is to serve as an advocate for students, to help ensure that their school experience is a happy and healthy one. Middle school counselors believe that the additions to the health curriculum would be a win-win. For LGBTQ students, it would help them feel like their experience and their identity is acknowledged and respected, which is so important in helping them feel a sense of connectedness to our schools. For students who do not identify as LGBT, this curriculum will help them better understand their peers with whom they share a classroom on a daily basis. I understand that one of the concerns is that middle school students are too young to be exposed to LGBTQ terminology. However, it is important to be aware that our middle schools are currently serving openly gay and openly transgendered students. So postponing this topic to high school or college is not a realistic nor proactive option. If this measure is approved, I look forward to collaborating with our colleagues in the Health and Physical Education Department to provide an appropriate and responsible educational experience which promotes the mental, social, and emotional health of all of the students that we serve. Thank you.
And Annie Kraus, school counselor.
My name is Annie Kraus. I'm a high school counselor at North High, and I've worked with middle school and high school students for over eight years as a teacher's aide and counselor. I'm here on behalf of the Parkway High School counselors to express support of the proposed Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Curriculum. These lessons help students to develop the language, awareness, and confidence to speak with a trusted adult like us who can provide the students with an appropriate response to their specific needs. As counselors, we see the most at-risk population in our schools. Particular aspects of this curriculum will help all students understand mental health, be accepting, support each other, and advocate for themselves and others who are struggling. As mental health issues continue to arise in our society and as our diverse population continues to grow, it is paramount that we educate everyone on these topics so that awareness and acceptance are the norm and not the exception. Thank you.
I would like to share a very special thank you to Mr. Ram- 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 Ron Ramspot, Ron, 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 and all the Parkway teachers, nurses, and counselors who have worked to provide you with the details regarding the curriculum, with the sample lessons. They have been dedicated to this process, and they have done an immense amount of studying and listening to constituents within our community. So I do want a special thank you to all of them who are able to be here tonight and all of them that weren't. Thank you very much for your continued questions and inquiry as you've done your study.
Thank you very much, Lisa, and to all of those staff that addressed us, too. It was last November when we approved ninety-five percent of the health education curriculum, and Dr. Marty suggested we take a little more time to study this out, and he made that recommendation. I'd like to ask him to come to the podium and kind of bring it to a close tonight, or for full circle.
Well, thank you, President Jacob and Board of Education. It's my pleasure to maybe bring some closure to the many people who have addressed you tonight, but I first would like to thank a number of people, and Lisa Meredith and Ron Ramspot and all the people that have been actively involved. Ron, I know you've had a, this has been your life, and thank you very much, and Lisa for your leadership in the many months, twenty months, of this work. I'd like to thank the many people who, in some capacity, served on the work with Ron and the advisory group and the groups that, the different meetings that they had. This group includes parents, educators, administrators, and students. It was a very inclusive group. I'd like to thank our health educators, as was mentioned, not just the ones who spoke tonight, but the many qualified health educators who worked hard during the past several months developing model lessons and answering many, many questions. They devoted a lot of their own time and effort to do this for the service of the Parkway School District. I'm married to a health educator, and I appreciate the understanding and work that goes into understanding and working with youth, and I appreciate all their work and the many qualified health educators we have. I want to thank all the people who have stepped up to help us in providing resources, many who have appeared here in board meetings and working with Ron and Lisa as well. Board, I want to thank you for your patience and understanding, and honestly, I hope the community really appreciates the work that this board did to hear all voices. Krista and the board have been wonderfully inclusive in taking the time to hear many voices. I know we had to cut people off tonight, but I'm sure we've heard from well over two hundred people at board meetings the last several months. Most importantly, I'd like to thank our community. Without sounding like an old guy that spent in education forty years and has been through many discussions of sexual health in many different forms, from the late seventies when we first had to decide as educators how we were going to discuss abortion after Roe versus Wade, to the years when homosexuality became a more prevalent topic, to HIV/AIDS, and then many other topics. I've been through this kind of discussion in different communities. And I have to say, community and to the board and to all the people that are gathered, this has been the most respectful and most open discussion I've had. It has been, certainly we've heard many different opinions and beliefs and ideas, but to have it all be in one room with people listening and being respectful is wonderful, and I want to thank all of you for that, no matter what the board decides tonight, you are to be congratulated. There has been, through the last several months, a number of issues, and we have listened intently, that have raised some questions about how we go about our work, not so much the content. And so, Board of Education, I am going tonight to present several commitments that we're going, that I want to make to you to make sure that, following what I hope is the approval of the curriculum and framework, that we will perhaps do our work more consciously and better over the next several years. Number one, I commit to ensuring our communication is parent-friendly and is updated in a way that is allowed people to find information and encourages conversation, as Lisa talked about, between children and families. We desire to be partners with parents and desire to work to ensure that a trusted adult is available for all our students. We will, again, work to improve our communications, and Ron has already worked on that in terms of our webpages, and we'll continue to make sure those are parent-friendly and certainly accessible. We will ensure that parent meetings are scheduled annually to review curriculum and resources at each school, and time for parents to meet with teachers and counselors and nurses to answer their questions. This, we believe, is vitally important, and will close some of the concerns and certainly open up some wonderful communications. Thirdly, we commit to ensuring the parents, to parents, that the opt-out procedures are clear and easy, so that when parents want to make that choice, it is honored, as was mentioned here tonight, and we believe it has been, but we want to make sure that continues, and we want to make sure that it is never uncomfortable for parents or students who choose that option. We want to honor that, and we'll continually to make it better for you. Fourthly, in some of our discussions, there's been some concerns raised by special needs parents, and we want to ensure that IEPs will be reviewed to provide any recommendations for instruction or no instruction when it comes to health topics. We do believe that we want to include our special needs children in an inclusive manner, but there may be topics sometimes that are sensitive and not appropriate of certain students, and we want to honor that through IEPs, our special education discussion that is certainly appropriate for all our children. Fifthly, we want to ensure annual training and updates for our health educators, nurses, and counselors as pertains to sexual frameworks and curriculum occurs annually. Our health teachers, as you heard, welcome that, and we want to include our nurses and counselors in that discussion as well, as well as any, all our staff. Dr. Meredith has suggested that we want to spend time with all our staff, ensuring they understand the frameworks, because question sometimes comes to all staff, not just those that are in the health profession or our nurses or counselors. Sixth, we will review and vet all new sexual health resources in a way that's appropriate, and we'll make sure that we, again, do that in an appropriate manner. We will never have resources that haven't gone through a very sincere and very detailed vetting process. Seventh, we will work closely with our religious leaders to ensure that they have the information and knowledge concerning our health framework, and that the curriculum will be shared with parents and community members. Yesterday, we had, and Mr. Jacobs and Mrs. Morgenman were at a meeting with several religious leaders, and we had a wonderful discussion, and we've had many discussions over the years, very open discussions, and we want to continue that, and we welcome more religious leaders to join us and make sure that we are sharing our curriculum in a way that allows them to understand what it is we're teaching and certainly gives them the information they require to share with their synagogues, congregations, and we want to be so inclusive in that as well. We want to maintain, eighth commitment is we want to maintain a curriculum cycle that is associated with all, that is associated with all district curriculums, and that we would review the sexual health curriculum in another six years. You have heard that we have probably not been as conscious of that, and we want to make sure that our health curriculum, and our sexual health curriculum, frameworks and curriculum is reviewed every six years. We make that commitment to you. And with all new curriculums or changes, as you have seen in the past, we will provide the board with an update in one year as to the progress of implementation. We do that with all curriculums, and provide to the board recommendations or any changes that we would have learned from the implementation in its first year. Tenth, we will continue to meet with the Sexual Health Advisory Group, and Ron is already, has a group of people that he's meeting with that includes parents, students, and staff, and we will continue to work with that group on an ongoing basis to make sure that we are, again, listening and carefully being associated with any changes or updates that we have to be conscious of. And finally, number eleven, we will continue to be aware and respect all viewpoints. As you heard tonight, I have met personally with several parents, and we have had thoughtful and sincere discussion, and I hope that discussion could occur with our principals and all of our professionals. We do need to work and constantly understand one another. Board, I would ask that you understand that those commitments are, first of all, to hold me to, to those commitments, but I also will hold our administrative staff and our school leaders and our curriculum coordinators to that as well. I do not need to repeat all the work that Lisa Meredith talked in terms of the curriculum, except to assure you, Board of Education and community, that this curriculum is and will continue to be an abstinence-based curriculum. It has been developed and maintained over the many years and will continue to be assessed. It is going to include new lessons in seventh and tenth grade, focusing exclusively on the benefits of abstinence, and one of the overarching outcomes of the entire sexual health curriculum is to increase the proportion of Parkway adolescents who have not been sexually active, as Dr. Meredith pointed out. In October, it was my decision to postpone the Board of Education's vote, because I felt it was important that we have more opportunity to engage in community discussion and to ensure that our board and community have the opportunity to hear one another. So we've had some active discussion over the last couple of months and a lot of work, as I pointed out. I believe that, to Dr. Meredith, who made the commitment back in October to have a medically accurate curriculum, a developmentally appropriate curriculum, and one that is presented in a neutral, non-biased manner, has been attained. In the last five months since October, audits have been completed, model lessons have been completed and shared with both the board and our community. We've had review by medical personnel and others, and any reviews, and we've made changes in the work, from feedback from parents, questions from the board, and our curriculum is indeed in compliance with Missouri law. In the last five months, we've continued to receive communication, which is, which we have accepted, as I mentioned, and has used it to update our curriculum. I believe, again, that this curriculum is in the best interests of our community, and as your superintendent, I am recommending the Parkway Board of Education approve the sexual education frameworks as presented. I firmly believe it maintains Parkway's commitment to ensuring that our students receive information that assists their social, emotional, and physical growth, and maintains our tradition of providing our abstinence-based factual instruction to keep our students safe and prepared for an ever-changing world that they will encounter while here still in Parkway, but most importantly, that they will face as adults, future employees and citizens, and parents and family members. I believe our educators have satisfactorily provided you of all the information that we committed to in October. Our community has weighed in, and you've heard a lot of diverse discussion, but I believe we can firmly commit that we have done our homework and done our work to provide our citizens and our students with the best work that we can, need to provide them to make sure that our students are safe, and most importantly, healthy, as they grow here at Parkway and into adulthood. Thank you very much, and again, I want to thank you, I want to thank our community for being engaged in what I think a lot of communities would be envious about, to have this frank discussion, and Board of Education, again, it's my recommendation that we approve this curriculum and framework. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Here we go. Before I call for a vote, and I'm going to invite each one of the members of the board, if they want to say something, they're not obligated to, but if they want to say something, they certainly earned the right to make a comment, but before I call for a vote, I, and I'll be the first one to start, I wanted to, number one, thank the administration for all that they have done to work with us and to provide us with information and answer our questions. At no time, amazingly, have I ever been asked or told how to vote, but they have been consistently asking, what questions do you have and what can we answer for you? So I thank them for that. I want to thank you parents, too. We've felt your passion over these months, and we, some people might be dismayed by that. I think it's a welcome sight that we can come together and talk about things even when we have opposing views on it. Mostly, I want to thank my colleagues here on the board. These are good people. Some of them, I've worked with them for up to eight years, and I've seen how they respond and how they want to help children in Parkway, and the yardstick they always use is what's best for kids. And we may end up on different sides at various times, but that is the yardstick they use, and it's been a pleasure these many years to work with them, and I thank them. We could all learn a good lesson from our United States Supreme Court. Those justices, Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Antonin Scalia, they proved to us that people can be on sharply opposing sides of the- be on sharply opposing sides of the political spectrum and still be friends and respect each other. What a marvelous friendship they held at his funeral, Justice Ginsburg, who often disagreed with him pretty sharply. She made this statement, "Justice Scalia makes me a better justice. Justice Scalia makes me a better person." So I hope as we go through this that we'll make a commitment to come together as the total Parkway community to make this part of our curriculum the best it ever can be and that everybody will participate in and feel hope that they can do that. Now, anybody else on the board that would like to make a statement or?
Sure. When I first came on this board in 2008, I came with a perspective of a parent. I'm not a trained educator, I had never worked in the field. I was a room mother, I was a party planner, I was PTO president, and I was encouraged by the leaders of my elementary school to seek a position on the board. What I have learned in the last eight years, not only has made me a better board member and a better advocate for children, but it has made me a better person. It has given me a broader view of the world. What I have learned in my growth from being merely a Parkway parent to being a board member with a vote that actually counts, I have learned that a broad perspective is required in every decision that we make. I no longer can look at something from one angle, that is the angle of the parent. I have to also review budgets, teachers, schedules, timing, children's needs, special education, so many things. But what I pledge to do to each and every one of you is to represent the very best interests of the Parkway students. Everything this board does is for the benefit of our children and any one of you that disagrees with that, I think does not know very much about the seven individuals on this board.
Well, you stole my thunder. Both of you, very elegant words and we have so many hardworking individuals within our staff and our fellow board members. We've learned so much. I think our 7:30 meetings may not be as interesting in the next month or so. We've had some interesting topics at 7:30 lately, but we appreciate everyone's viewpoints. We appreciate all of the hard work people have done and I would like to thank all of you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd just like to say that I was really dead set against postponing this vote, but at this point where I sit now, I'm glad that we did because I appreciate the diversity of opinions. I've learned a heck of a lot about the whole topic and I was glad to be able to get the input that we did.
I just want to also thank our administration. This has taken a toll on everybody and I have delved into this, I have watched videos, I have read material, I have talked to doctors, I have talked to fellow board members, I've talked to teachers, I've talked to so many people. We have neighbors, but I have to say, I'm the one person on the board that has young children still in the district that are going to be going through this curriculum. We have to be careful that what we teach them is the right thing to do. And I am convinced that whether this gets approved or does not get approved, that even a no vote may mean that it's not that we don't want to teach some of the things because I am convinced that there are some of the elements of this curriculum that need to be taught, but if it goes that the vote is no, it doesn't mean don't do this, but it means let's keep working at it, let's keep talking about it, let's keep reevaluating it and let's make sure that when another district comes to us and says, "What is Parkway doing?", that we will feel comfortable saying, "This is it, this is what we have bought into" and we endorse the replication of this to other students throughout the state and possibly the rest of the United States.
Sam, you're an appropriate guy to be the last one to talk.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank the administration, Dr. Marty and the board. This has been a very difficult period in our time because there's so many positive aspects of this decision and this sexual health curriculum on both sides, there's no question about it. And I do want to thank all of you who've sent us emails and letters and those of you who spoke before the board over the last few times. We appreciate that very much and it's helped us to really think about our students and what's best for our students. And I'm not sure if there's any one right answer. It's a difficult decision, but I think in the end, regardless of the decision of the board, I certainly will support the decision no matter what it is and I think together we'll make great things happen for our students relative to their sexual health and their well-being. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Board. May I ask for a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Curriculum Frameworks for implementation in the 2016-2017 school year?
So moved.
And Nikki, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mrs. Applebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum.
Yes.
Mrs. Felton.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper.
No.
Mrs. Mogerman.
Yes.
Dr. Ciotino.
No.
Mr. Jacob.
No.
The motion carries for three. We're going to take a short break.[1005.01]